Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Schifrin, Chairman of Planning Board, and I call our meeting of October 30th, 2023 to order at 6:31 PM. We have a roll call, please, and I would like to start with online. Tony? Tony's roll call.
Tony Lopez here.
Thank you, Tony.
Carol Hofstas here.
Andrew Shepherd here.
Laura Schifrin here. So we have a quorum. Robert is absent with notice. I do not have any chairman's additions or deletions to this evening's meeting. We have before us 1.4, approval of the minutes of October 2nd. Take that first. Is there a motion or any discussion after?
I think you have them. I didn't have any comments.
I didn't have any issues either.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion then for discussion.
You have me to approve?
To approve them.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 10:22.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion in reference to October 22nd, excuse me, October 2nd minutes of the meeting?
No discussion for me.
Okay, hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Tony Lopez, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Next, we have the draft of the executive session, was it, or the pre-meeting? On October 4th, just before the meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
No, no, that's just a, we can read the minutes, they're pretty different, you know. There were two meetings on October 4th.
Oh, except that this is executive session?
Yeah, and they're not the minutes, but that's the what?
So we're just gonna accept?
Yeah, yeah, I don't have it, yeah.
Right. Okay, so since this was before our regular meeting, let's take a motion on the pre-meeting to our planning board meeting, which was an executive session on October 4th, 2023. The one pager.
There, I read through them.
Yeah, I read through them.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Is Tony good with, are you good with the minutes, Tony?
I am. I looked over them. Looked, looked good.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 4th, 2023.
Executive session.
Executive session.
Tony, do you want a second? I'll spread the.
I'll second that. I'll second that. Yep.
Thank you, Tony. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote. We can start with Tony.
Tony, yes.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Moving on to October 4th, regular meeting of the planning board, the minutes at hand. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure.
And I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote, please, to approve the October 4th, 2023 minutes.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Tony Lopez, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Okay, thank you very much. We did have a 6:45 appointment, so let's go on to Beth, do you want to do some of your report for the next five minutes?
So for, this is the administrative report. It's covering the 10-16 meeting as well, so it might be a little lengthy, but I'll go quickly. For applications, 66 Bayberry Hill Road, major stormwater management permit, the planning board decision and the stormwater management permit were issued and have been picked up for recording. For 27 Scales Lane, there is a request pending, special perm on stormwater management permit 2019-03. They requested a certificate of completion. Staff have been in communication with the owner. Site visit was made in over the summer. A letter was sent to the owner requesting information. And recently, a letter was sent to the owner requesting their attendance at this board meeting. We are expecting the owner at 6:45 tonight.
Okay.
Enter department of approvals, 152 North End Road, construction of a barn using the existing foundation. And I've uploaded the decision, the planning board decision for the farm span into the database. 81 Turnpike Road, removal of an existing side deck and construction of a new deck and a mudroom attached to the house. Replacement over at Door. On 3 Saunders Road, they're adding a two-car, two-story garage attached to the house, and the second story is unfinished. There was also one more, I'm sorry, I think it's on there, that's for car park, carport. Site visits and compliance.
Is that the same address?
Carport, yeah, I'll get you that one. I may have it on my
That's okay. I just wanted, wanted to know if you were just adding to 3 Saunders Road, the carport?
Yeah, the carport is on 14 Blood Road.
Oh.
It's a 12-by-20 carport. Yeah, so those are all approved through the building department online permitting. That's all there.
Okay, right. So for site visits and compliance, for 22 Main Street, Best Run's Veterinary Clinic, the letter was issued to the owner
as the planning board extended the completion date of the construction action items to November 30th. The copy on file with the town clerk as well. 22 West Meadow Road, Walkford Solar Way, site plan condition. The 2023 landscape monitoring report, follow-up plantings. On August 18th, in response to the board's vote, next hand planted four additional trees, two eastern red cedar and two flowering dogwoods in the vegetative stream along West Meadow Road. The landscape architect provided the board the photographs of the completed work, and they're in your folders, your meeting folders. 2500 Trace Stormwater Management Permit is in compliance. Campbell Wave, Campbell Farm OSPD subdivision, stormwater management permit is also cited in compliance. The permit does expire on the 7th of 9th, and permit holder has been in contact with Land Use and intends to file for the extension. Three Wheeler Road, stormwater management permit, site inspection on 1025. Sites in compliance, the permit is updated that an application to the ZDA to renew the earth excavation permit will soon be filed. 94 Pittsburgh Road, we did the pre-construction site visit on 1010, according to the conditions of their site plan review. But that's the age restricted development. There are erosion control barriers in place, construction schedule has been submitted and is in your folders. That was also a condition of the special permit. They are in compliance with the planning board special permit and minor stormwater management permit. If I feel miscellaneous, as you all know, the planning board public meeting on October 4th, the board granted waivers for the turnaround at 37 Bridges Road. The documentation for that vote is on file with the town clerk and the copies in your folders. October 16th, the planning board meeting was not held due to a lack of form, all agenda items are room to today. This is just brand new. The Citizen Planning Training Cooperative Fall Workshops have been announced. They're $35 a class, and they're listed in, I think I sent you all an email. I forwarded you all the classes, so you should have that in your email.
Thank you.
Other than that, we have a planning board application service fee schedule, which is ongoing. We received, the board received a memo from MRPC announcing a comment period on the draft highway amendment. That information is also in your folders. The County Carefree Mark Service, hello.
Hello.
Shuttleback Service has revised the schedule. That's also in your folders. And the MBTA community's update will be provided by Jonathan Volus at Southern Club. Mark my call. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So this isn't a public hearing, so some specs here, we could take them?
Yeah, anytime.
So just one minutes earlier than
Yes, sure.
So if you want, you can come up to the table. So we understand that you had asked for a completion certificate of the stormwater work that was to be done. And when staff went out to review, there were some things that were not done as per the plans?
Sure.
So did you want to address that, please?
Is this being held, Wes?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think in order Sure. It's a meeting. In order to all get on the same page, maybe you were on the board, Laurie, when we got permitted? I'm not sure.
Oh, good, I don't remember.
Okay. All the other board members knew? If you want me to discuss this motion, this, I'd like to go into executive session. I don't, I'm not gonna, I'm not willing to speak about this without being in executive session. Because I want to tell the whole story of how we got here, not just why we are here.
Okay, can we do that?
We can't call it executive session right now, but we can certainly throw it in another agenda.
Either that, or can we go into executives after the rest of the meeting? I mean, if you want to.
Yeah, I'll go either way. I'd like to get it over with.
I don't, I don't believe this counts as one of the 10, like authorized reasons.
Yeah.
Then I can go to, oh, I see, I have to.
If you're more comfortable to set up an appointment with me or Beth in the office, we can do that.
No, I want, I want the board to hear it. I, it's, I want the board to hear the whole story. I mean, that's, it's not just with you and Beth, it's.
Well, let's see, original day of the hearing.
I, I, I do have a reason, and I'm not gonna, there's gonna be some names given, okay, and I
Oh, it's in 2019. Was it issued in 2019?
Sounds about right, yeah.
And extended November of '22, so, yeah, I've been on, I've been on for a while.
I, I thought you might have been on, but I think you're the only board member that wasn't on it.
Yeah.
I think, I think Beth was, I think you were present. I think you had more conservation roles at time, maybe, though, but.
No, I need that, planning board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't we set up a separate of the meeting? And, and make sure that the minutes of the meeting are, that are referenced here in this permit are sent to the board. And if you want, we can do that. Oh. Jessica? How can we call for one if the applicant requests it?
Uh, that's what I
Not tonight, but with notice.
Right. Um, that's what I'm looking at right now, to review those, the reads, the 10 reasons to go into executive session. I don't know right now, so if it's okay to give me a day or two to look into a little bit more, Laurie, and then I can email you if that works.
Okay. All right, and then we can set up
Sure.
a meeting after that, but I would definitely have all the board members read those minutes before. And then when you're talking about it, they will have some familiarity with it.
Sure.
What minute time was the meeting?
Well, where the decisions were made. When, when it was issued.
The decision for?
The order of conditions. I mean, I'm sure that
No, this is, this was a certificate of completion for the stormwater management system.
That's what he's asking for, but when the conditions were set.
Yep.
They were set originally by the board.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I want this board to know those minutes.
You mean, you want the board to look at the permit? The board made a decision and issued
Okay, yeah, so whatever that was.
Okay.
But the written decision.
Yep.
I want them to know that before we start, you know, talking about it.
Okay. That's in your folder, so.
But can you draw the attention of those documents to the board? That's what I'm asking. Okay. Okay, so as, as soon as I figure out how we can do it.
Yeah.
Um, Beth, we'll get back to you with when we can, if we can do it, when we can do it.
Okay.
And in the meantime, the board will be apprised of the situation beforehand, and then you can speak to it, and then they're not just
You know, I get it.
They're not going to hear the background.
And that's what I want. I want everybody to know the background.
Okay.
I want everybody to know how we got here.
Okay.
And then we can figure out how to address it, which I have no problem. There was a few concerns that, or not concerns, but pointed out a few things that needed to be done, and I have no problem doing them.
Okay.
They're, they're minor, but
Okay.
I, I want to fill everybody in on how we got here.
All right, if, if that, if, if I'm allowed to do that. Well, I love you.
Okay, and if not, next time I come, give me some notice, because I'll bring my attorney next time. I want to try to handle this
Okay.
the easy way.
Okay.
For everybody.
All right.
That's probably best. It seems like you came in looking for a fight, so I don't know if that's the right approach.
I'm, I don't know if you know me, but I'm definitely not looking for a fight. I, I want to fill you in on how we got here.
I'd love to review, I'd love to review everything you have, and so would the board, but you have an attitude, and I don't think that's the way you're gonna accomplish anything here.
Okay, Tony.
I'll do whatever's easier for you folks.
Okay. So as soon as I hear from Jessica, we'll decide what I can do and what I can't do, and then you'll be apprised of what we can do, okay?
Sounds good to me.
And then in the meantime, I'll make sure that the board gets noticed on what documents they should be looking at
Okay.
before we speak again.
Awesome.
I know, I mentioned at the last meeting we had with Brett, but Brett is my fire deputy, so I'm abstaining from issues involving Brett.
Oh, that would be the same plan for that, too, if I wanted to bring in another board member.
I guess it would.
Okay.
So that would leave Robert and Victor.
Well, okay, yeah. We'll have a quorum.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, when we, thinking, next meeting maybe, or, hard to say?
The next meeting is the, is the
13th and 27?
13th. What do we have on that agenda so far, anything?
I'm sorry, 13th, uh, no, December, I think?
November 13th.
Right now, no.
Okay. Well, depending on what we we can put you on that.
Okay, perfect. Awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we have another few minutes, and let's go to any other work session items. Do we have anything more on the fee schedule? Just checking.
I was, well, I know we're gonna try to separate out the fee schedules. And I know Robert's on the committee, the fees, fee committee. I'm not on that committee, but Robert is.
Okay. Discussion of board regulations. Beth, are these just the ones that are on every month?
Yes.
Okay.
Have a standing item, so.
3.4, announcements, communications. That is special town meeting on Tuesday, the 14th. I will not be here, just to let you know, guys. And Beth doesn't think she's gonna be here either for that. Bylaw, review committee has actually had two meetings already. They had one today. Robert is on that committee, but he was not able to attend. Beth is also on that committee. Can you tell us a little bit on the first two meetings of bylaws?
Yeah, so we met for an organizational meeting and kind of an overview on October 12th. And the thing, what they decided to do was, first of all, Eric's label was helping get it more organized, and his suggestion was to send out a request to the department heads and for them to get feedback on problems, issues that they dealt with through the code. And so that was done, and the deadline for that was the 20th. There was, you know, a good amount of feedback there. I did send in quite a few bylaws that I've seen over the years to the planning board and the ZDA that have been kind of snag points. And I'm sure there is a lot more that I sent in, a few. Jessica sent in a few. Housing Authority sent in a bylaw. Those all came in through Sabrina, and they were sent out to the committee. Beyond that, the other step mentioned in that first meeting was that committee members could send their comments and, you know, bylaws of interest to the chair, which was also done.
Who was the chairing?
Bill Cadigan. And Robert's vice chair. That meeting is online, if you guys, you know, have kind of a good view of it. This meeting today, there was a quick tutorial from the Ecode representative who talked to the board members about how to navigate the code used to search features and multi-code searches. And, because it was excellent, very good to know. And there was also talk about funding at this particular meeting, this past meeting, how the, the, the goal is to review both the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws. So it is, like the charter review is a very big task, and so there was some discussion about how there'll be funding for consultants to make sure that we're, you know, consistent with state law, and we have somebody, you know, write the code or write the amendments and that, and so that was also the case. So, yeah, so that's kind of where we are. The next meeting is December, maybe set at 13th. And in the meantime, board members are gonna review what we have right now.
So I would suggest that we all on planning look at the October 12th, look at the meetings that are online available. So since bylaws are presented by planning, we should be aware of what they're addressing. And then I'm sure that we can send in some comments as well, right?
I am not sure how this is, you know, the only organization I'm aware of right now is at the request of the town administrator or the suggestion of the town administrator, staff would be polled, and bylaw committee members would be also polling, you know, to, to give their feedback on bylaws that are really, you know, concerning. If you want to send stuff to me, I think that would be absolutely fine. I would just keep a list. The chair of the committee is gonna be keeping a master list of stuff that he gets, so I'd be happy to bring your, you know, suggestions to the next board meeting.
Okay.
And I'll ask that question about who's gonna be organizing.
I don't see much else. Tony, did you have any input on that?
No, I don't right now, no.
Okay, so when you get a chance, if you want to look at those meetings online.
Will do.
The bylaw, which is, the, the first one was October 12th.
I have that right here in front of me.
Okay. Anything else? Where do I have Andrew?
Correspondent? I, 3.4? No. Communications?
I don't know, 3.4, is, is that Andrew for any other?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you know this is
Yeah.
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 Are we at seven? Is Jonathan joining us? Is that?
He should be showing up.
I have a few more minutes, so I'm on adjourned until after he comes.
Sure, sure. Let's see, first one from the Townsend Historical District Commissions. Be advised, is a public hearing on Wednesday, the 8th of November at 4:30 PM at Memorial Hall, this building, Room 2. Comment period for work to be done to the exterior of the Harbor Fire Station at 65 Main Street. That is from Ano Kelpie. This is from the Town of Groton, town clerk. Public notice, zoning board of appeals, it will be holding a public hearing on Wednesday, November 15th, at Groton Town Hall, second floor meeting room to convene a hearing for the application of Rail Trail Holdings Company, Holding Company LLC, 25 Station Ave, Groton, for the petition, for the petition of a variance of frontage, lot size, and setback requirements to allow a portion of 25 Station Ave to be conveyed to the Town of Groton for use as a public way, as discussed with the town manager on lot 113-56, off Station Ave. See, this is Lunenburg. Public notice of public hearing from the planning board. October 23rd, we missed it, at 6:05 PM. Hear and review applications for a definitive subdivision plan. And the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land and stormwater management permit. Where's 171 Arbor Street to create a road and four lots. The applicant and owner are PSG Realty, 393-435 LLC. 133 Leamester Shirley Road in Lunenburg. Materials are available at the planning board, planning office in Lunenburg Town Hall. Town of Shirley Planning Board Legal Advertisement. The Town of Shirley Planning Board will conduct a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, November 1st, at the Town Office Building. Application submitted by Brandon McCob, Apple Valley Homes LLC, 3 Old Farm Road, Pepperell, Mass. Public hearing for a site plan review. Under the zoning bylaws, uses special permit, multifamily housing. Property is within the water supply and well protection district. Applicant wants to construct a two-family dwelling on each lot. The parcel is located at Zero Great Road, Shirley, Mass. It's in the mixed Houston district.
Maybe that construction issue, July. How, how they're doing, how does that work, and how are they doing it, and do they have public water, public sewer there, or?
Another one from the Town of Shirley. Zoning Board of Appeals is conducting a public hearing, the Town Office Building, November 6th. Application submitted by William and Michelle Alefki, 35 Benjamin Road, Shirley, Mass. Public hearing for a variance per section 3.3.2, C2 of the Protective Zoning Bylaws relating to minimum yard setbacks side 15 feet. Parcel is located at 35 Benjamin Road.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you.
We got Jonathan?
Because Jonathan's here.
That's some more exciting information.
Jonathan, we're at 7:01. Nice to see you.
It's good to see you guys as well.
Okay, and the floor is yours.
Um, okay. So in about, in precisely two weeks, we are planning to have a you're almost precise, the two weeks, we're planning to have a public information session during the town meeting to present details on the MB, MBTA community's work that's being done in towns and, and has been done over the last several months to the community as both an information session and also a feeler, as it were, for support if, if any of this is to be, you know, brought to a vote, which, which it will have to be at some point. Ambitiously, we're hoping for the Ambitiously, we're hoping for the spring town meeting. Assuming everything seems to be palatable and we can keep, keep the inertia going. And as part of that, I will be presenting the information as the, the primary planner. That has been working on from MRPC. And it will be divvied up into two sections, really. It would be a brief overview of the MBTA, the requirements, the obligations. Townsend specific obligations of one hundred and seventy-eight units. The density requirements, all of that. And then the second half will be a review of the three. Districts, the three exploratory districts that the working group has settled on for now. And then we'll also be providing a short survey or public, public information. Survey where people can provide their feedback a little bit more directly if they have any concerns or questions. Or there are any issues they want to make sure are addressed prior to continuing to work on writing the draft bylaw. So that we can address those ahead of time. And that way we don't encounter that stumbling block. Shortly before we expected to bring it to, to vote at town meeting and we can address it prior to that instead. And then a large part of it will resemble the original overview presentation that was given to the planning board. Several months ago. It's just a repeat session and then it will be a little bit more in-depth examining the three parcels without. Or the three potential districts without going into too much detail because we have time considerations that we have to keep in mind.
Any questions from the board?
I don't think specifically about that. I do have a question I thought about, about the parcels. I was thinking about parcel two, which is the one on Old City Road. And I was just wondering if. I don't, I remember I talked to Superintendent Vigent about where the water lines go up to on Route thirteen. I guess I was wondering if there might be another parcel along. It's not like it goes high up Old City Road, but I just think in terms of minimizing future town expenses, if you keep it all on the same line.
On thirteen?
On thirteen.
Yeah.
I think it would, yeah, save the town all, like a little bit of money unless it just gets pawned out a fund by the developer, but.
Which is most likely what's gonna happen.
Sure.
They have to pay for the piping to go to wherever they have.
Sure. But I guess Jonathan, I was thinking. Just wondering if there was another spot along Route thirteen, just keep them all on the main road rather than flanking them off, flanking that one off, but.
I'm, I'm trying to pull up the map so I can give you a more exact answer. I, I would say it's always possible to either increase or modify the, the specific parameters of these districts. And. There are others that, that I guess work more currently along that line of the, of the water concerns with. Which one is it, it's the parcel with the water tower. Cannot recall the name right this second.
Get me Andrew, he smells. The yellow one with the flashes and.
The one he's talking about with the water tower?
Yeah.
I think that one's right near Emery, a little past Emery. If you're going towards Lunenburg on the right.
Yeah, I know it's on the right.
Kind of near that, I don't know, near that red.
Yeah, 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 that, that is where it is.
So yeah, District two is along Old City, District one borders Old City. And then District three is along Route thirteen.
Is that the other, is that the? Is that the only one that's on thirteen? That's on the Lunenburg line?
One on the Lunenburg line, one near the water tower, and then there's Old City.
Yeah, and, and the, I, I wanna say, I think we talked about it, but. Where, where Moore has this enterprises there. What's that, he doesn't own that whole parcel, but that one to the left of it was.
There is a long one right next to it, I thought.
Can Hartley, can you?
That would be a good.
Not the Blood Road parcel, correct?
Not, not Blood Road.
Okay.
No, it's on thirteen, next to the Moore Enterprises property. And I don't have that in front of me of what it is. But next to the left of it, there's a large parcel of vacant land, which used to have a bar that burned down. Something, so it's the one on Main Streets, it was the same.
Sure, sure.
The one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's before you were born.
Yeah.
So.
I'm looking at the map right now and it looks like that is actually. Possibly covered by, by District two. Or by, by District one.
Can you share your screen, Jonathan, or can that?
Let me see if I can do so.
There you go.
Thank you, Beth.
Can you zoom in on that? So three, two, one, one being off to the left there, right? No, there's one. Oh, so one is on the Lunenburg line. Two is. Old two. And what's three?
Uh, Route thirteen.
Route thirteen, where? Oh, that's on, okay, that side of thirteen, okay.
Is that cut out, Jonathan, the water tower in District three?
Yes, that cut out is the water tower. And then, so more, more enterprises. It does look like it either, it either borders or is incorporated into District one. Just from, just from a quick look at, at Google, Google Maps.
Okay. I think that's, well, that's a good spot. I mean, the reason why that one was there, we talked about the fact that Lunenburg has water. You know.
And I think, when I talked to Dave. Just can't remember where he told me that it was, but I think water is kind of close to there, or maybe it stops at Emery.
And it's. Town water?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know he hopes to, you know.
Town water.
Yeah, the, that was, that was one of the other. Primary driving factors. The locations in this, this section of town. Can either have two potential avenues of access for water, either from Lunenburg or from Townsend, from Townsend itself. It's either extended or connected to existing water infrastructure.
I guess I was just thinking that the less times you have to like hook a right angle or go up. You know, the hill in West Townsend or towards that hill, it'd make it just a hair easier and likely cheaper in the long run. In terms of actually having those come to fruition.
I see our state rep is on, good evening. How are you? Do you have any feedback? Or Jonathan, I know MRPC, we've been talking about so many towns that have the similar. Challenges that we have.
Yes, a lot of the small adjacent communities.
Right, has anything come back from the state that is gonna address our issues? That are not issues in cities where they have public water, public sewer? Anything yet because we got, we, we really do need that.
Good, and not, before maybe Margaret, you jump in. One of the things that I feel like we talked about was originally we were looking along Hannaford area in town. And we really were drawn to that area because you have, you know, food services, you have the.
Yeah, it's a redevelopment tool.
You, you have a lot of development already there and we really were drawn to putting more density there, I believe. The water department was a concern and I think because of the, part of the concern was the fifteen units minimum per acre.
And if they could reduce that.
Yeah.
It would be more palatable.
We were never able to breach a conversation of having slightly, you know, less than the fifteen units per acre, still a greater density. And utilizing what's already been developed opposed to.
Although there is some flexibility with the mixed use. Capacity that EO HLC rolled out a couple of months ago. The density still has to average at fifteen units an acre. As that's, that is the absolute constraint that is, it has to be fifteen units an acre in the bylaw, even if it's not necessarily built. It has to zone to allow for that at the, at the absolute minimum. I, one of the other considerations was, and there still is some concern about how the two overlay districts would interact with each other. Since there is the Aqua for Protection Overlay District. And then this, the, the mechanism we've been looking at for the MBTA district would also be an overlay district. And we have not yet received any. Concrete guidance on how those would necessarily interact and if that would impact. The evaluation of compliance from EO HLC. Which is one of the reasons we started looking towards areas that, that wouldn't be the potential conflict.
Margaret, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yes, good evening, I'm sorry, I couldn't get to my unmute button fast enough the first time around. I, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to come and listen and. I, I do know that several reps and senators, including myself. Went to the Attorney General to make the case for towns like Townsend and others in the district and throughout the Commonwealth. That, you know, we're not a big city and we don't have big city resources and. You know, we just happen to be adjacent to a community that has a commuter rail. And she was absolutely adamant, she was not changing the guidelines. She wasn't going to entertain any kind of exceptions. You know, so Jonathan, it sounded like you were getting, you weren't getting anywhere with conversations that you were having as well.
I mean, that, that was a conversation. We put forward the question just because it was a constant concern we were hearing and the answer we got was. There is some leeway with some of the other tools that were built in, in terms of using mixed use. But the density requirement is absolutely the hard line.
Who is she, if I may, cause everybody may not know.
Oh, the Attorney General? Andrea Campbell?
Okay, that's tough.
Yeah.
She doesn't live out here.
I mean, all, all of the selected, all of the selected areas that we've done the exploratory zoning for. All allow for in excess of fifteen, fifteen units an acre. So we can increase open, open space allotments, we can still work with that, but they all. With the compliance modeling that we've done, they are all in excess of that. So any of these three areas are guaranteed to meet, guaranteed to meet compliance as long as there isn't language in the bylaw that. Is contrary to some of the other guidance that was issued with the, like age restriction or anything like that. As long as there's not anything like that in the language of the bylaws for any overlay district that's created, most of. It would, it would be difficult to box yourself out of making these districts compliant.
Well, thank you very much, Jonathan, for your update and Margaret for going to that for us. Now, I appreciate you both being here, Jessica, you're on now.
Could I please have screen sharing permissions?
Okay, stand by. You got it.
Thank you. All right, where to start? Okay. I have about four different screens I wanna share, so I'm just gonna have to toggle back and forth through them, so sorry. In advance for the trip. All right, so FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, they are the. Deciders of where all of the flood planes will go, one hundred year flood planes. So these flood maps have been in existence forever. And most recently, there are new draft flood maps that are being published. Through much of the country, including towns in Massachusetts. So what I wanted to do today was just basically show you how you can navigate to your own property. To review your existing, if any, and proposed, if any. Flood zone on your property. So there is a link, sort of a news announcement on our town webpage. With these different databases that I'm going to run through with you for your reference. Or of course, any questions, you're welcome to come into the landowner's office or give us a call. So this window that you guys can see is the National Flood Hazard Layer Viewer. It is just like searching for an address on Google Maps. So I will navigate, I guess first, just to Town Hall. And poof, so how FEMA has sort of organized our town and every town is through a series of maps called panels. And each panel has its own sort of special ID code to search, which is here in this green text. So. Our, our Town Hall panel is too, well, I don't need to read it. Town Hall panel ends in sixty-two E. So this, these maps were last revised in twenty-ten. And they are proposed to, I think, be adopted by FEMA in like twenty-twenty-four or early twenty-twenty-five. I'm not fully certain. So from there. FEMA has made it a little bit difficult to view their proposed maps, which are downloadable through their website. So it's not entirely user friendly. So it's a lot of steps, that's why we're here today. So again, so if you keep in mind this panel number that ends in zero zero sixty-two E. Is our existing map. Where's Town Hall, hold on, I wanna cook. Oh, there it is, right there. So let me see if I can swap, uh-oh. Oh, there it is, right there. Um, so let me see if I can swap. Uh-oh, I can swap screens here. Did you see a different screen? Are you guys still seeing the map?
No, the screen.
Good. Fantastic. All right. So this is the new website or the, the website that FEMA has sent out where you can view your new map. So we're going to select our state and our county. Going to get the preliminary map products. Oh, that's terrible.
System error. Yeah.
Of course. Oh, well, you know what? Hold on. Let me, um, I, I downloaded them already. Let me navigate through that. Oh, my goodness. If luck would have it, right?
So Jessica, that, that map that you, uh, excuse me, that screen that was just shown, is that a link on our website?
It is, yes. Sorry, I have to do my security factor. Um, it is on the website, yes. And you can also just Google, um, you know, FEMA maps, floodplain maps, um, and it should be there. They have several different databases where you can go and view the, the map, but that is, that's sort of my go-to. Um, all right. Oh, this is gonna be unfortunate. Okay, so, um, let's do this. Alrighty. Sorry about that. No control. All right, so this is why we planned it advance. So here we go. So new map downloaded. Um, the new maps that the, the link that I was trying to show you where there's a system error leads you to, um, different links for PDFs where you can download your map. So you can only download by that panel ID number that we were looking at, that was in green ink before. Um, and then you have, and, and so we're looking here up at the top, the zero-zero-six-two. So, um, that is sort of how you can navigate and, and figure out which new panel map you want to be looking at. So we're going to zoom in to Town Hall. Those of you who have been to Town Hall know that we probably should not be in a floodplain. Um, so here's Town Hall, this little building right above the word Riverbank Terrace. So fortunately, the proposed flood map um, shows that Town Hall will be out of the floodplain. Um, so that sort of that, that system error kind of threw a wrench in my example. But, um, what I do want to show also is a place that you guys probably know, um, Squanacook Meadows, which is where the TESA soccer fields are. Um, let me see if it's on this map. I don't think it is. So bear with me for another second. Sorry.
Jessica, tell us what the colors were.
So the colors, um, when I, I, when I pull up the next map, I will can explain those. Oh, and I should know, since this is being recorded, I am not an expert in the subject matter. I know enough to get dangerous.
Disclosure.
For the meeting minutes, please. Um, but yes, uh, my background is in wetlands, not floodplains, which are very different things.
Still water. Or wet.
Alrighty, so, um, here we are. Uh, buh-buh-buh. Sorry, guys. Hold on. Thank you for your patience. All right, where are we? There we go. All right, cool. Back in business. All right, so. All right, so navigating, we, if you're on my mouse, Main Street is down here. The, um, the old settler, settler shop is right here. Uh, then you hit a right onto Canal Street, which turns into Mason Street. And then here are the TESA soccer fields. This is Horseshoe Drive. Um, and this right here, a very special area in Townsend is where a few streams join, um, in confluence to start the headwaters of the Squanacook. So, um, are you guys, is everyone semi-familiar with the area?
Yeah.
So, um.
Colors.
Yeah, so this, the, the, the main one, the, the trouble colors, I guess, we'll go with are the blue and the red and blue. So those are Zone A. The A designations are those that are considered high-risk flood areas, the ones that are, you know, the, some people still call it the one hundred-year floodplain. Um, the designation that you would still need to get flood insurance, um, and follow proper building, uh, you know, management techniques for constructing in or near a floodplain. Um, the orange, I think, is Zone X. That is, um, might flood, maybe flood, but not, you know, hi- high-risk enough to require um, any different design standards or, or insurance for. Um, so those who are familiar with this area, the soccer fields obviously are very flat. There, um, is a really nice sort of walking path up here on the top. Oh, I should, I should stop myself. These, I think, uh, are where like sand, they used to mine for sand through here. So it's pretty, um, you know, the classic like sand pit where there's a really high berm around most of the park. Um, and then, and then, then you have the, the flat bottom where the, the soccer fields are now. So from the soccer field up to the top of where the walking path is, that's probably like, I don't know, a fifteen-ish foot change in elevation. And then you drop down like a really steep slope, one that you wouldn't even want to climb down, down to the river. And that's about thirty feet down. So this map here is the existing flood map for the TESA soccer fields. The proposed flood map has all those soccer fields in that basin mapped as a high flood area. Um, so again, those who, who understand and sort of know the elevation out there know that it's kind of ridiculous that the soccer fields are mapped as floodplain because the river would literally need to crest like thirty feet, um, to spill over down onto the soccer fields. So, um, again, not a subject expert in this at all, but I'm pretty sure FEMA uses, it's called the base flood elevation. And it's, it's different, um, elevations above main sea level that, um, certain numbers, certain elevations, you can just kind of go around and I think like connect the dots and that becomes your new floodplain. So obviously with change in climate and everything, those elevations that are subject to flooding are, um, are changing from what they used to be. So there are a lot more areas that are being mapped as proposed floodplain than were in the past. So, um, anyway, coming around, the reason FEMA reached out to Townsend, amongst many other towns, was to just, to let them know that these proposed maps are out on the market um, and are, are open to a ninety-day appeal period, which ends at the, wow, in a month, at the end of November. Um, so you, you know, you guys can review your properties or again, we can at least help navigate you on these maps to review your properties. Um, so if you do wish to submit an appeal, um, you need, you know, you need to, to collect scientific or technical data. They don't give you much, um, help, but you get, you know, you can't just say, oh, that, that never floods, you know, that doesn't have much backing to it. So, um, anyway, you as the residents, you know, homeowners who, who might need or have flood insurance currently, um, that's definitely something, you know, it takes five or 10 minutes to do, just to check into, to make sure. Um, I know Carol has her own personal story for this too, so.
Yes. Yes, I will tell you. It's very expensive. It happened to me in Westford. My house, I had wetlands, not Townsend, but my property is the same way. It's, it was in Westford. My house sat up about fifteen feet above the wetlands and the wetlands always dried out in the summertime and there was never a lot of water. My house had about fifteen feet up higher. And FEMA did, I went to refinance and at the eleventh hour, I was told I needed flood insurance, which I never had yet ever for the, when I bought my house and when I refinanced the first time, the second time I went to refinance, they told me I need flood insurance. This is why. FEMA redid the maps and they redid the maps aerially by the air. Never took into account elevations at all. And at the time, it was two thousand dollars a year for flood insurance. And the only way I could avoid that was I had to spend money and get an elevation engineer. And you, um, get an elevation engineer, you submit the forms and you don't ask for the whole property. You can't ask for the whole property to be out of the floodplain. You could only ask for the structure because if one square foot is in the floodplain and way down in the corner of my lot, it was in Little Puddle, way, way over there. So I just asked for the structure to be out of the floodplain. It costs twenty-five-hundred, three thousand dollars to get an elevation engineer and I submitted all the paperwork and I did, and FEMA did accept it. But I was mad at FEMA because we had no notification. They don't take into any consideration the elevations when they do these maps of where these properties are. Um, they just look at, oh, it's water and therefore it's gonna flood. So.
So, but Jessica, did you just say that they give use elevation?
I, I think so. Um, I'm sure they're, they're monitorizing their methods.
Maybe.
Is, is the, like the three hun- the black numbers, like, uh, at TESA, the three oh nine, is that an elevation? Three hundred and nine feet?
Um, yeah, probably.
So I guess the way I interpret this, if I look at the TESA field, three oh nine feet maybe above sea level, and then I look at the Squanacook, the red and blue area, it says three oh eight. So I'm sure in FEMA's eyes, they're seeing a one-foot difference, but it doesn't seem they're accounting for like the thirty-foot embankment that abuts the Squanacook. Or maybe they think with climate change, we're gonna have like Noah's Ark coming down the Squanacook.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think some of these are like prosessions that were done, um. So, yeah, I don't, again, I'm sorry. I wish I had better answers, but, um.
Interesting.
We're here to help at least read the map.
I guess I, I wouldn't be surprised. I can't imagine FEMA like, you know, individually considers this. So they must have an algorithm that says, you know, let's monitor changes in elevation. And I would think it's probably not sophisticated enough to measure embankments.
Yeah. Our Mr. Mapper map too, um, okay. I guess I have to zoom in more. So, yeah, so you can see like how steep the slopes are through here.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so.
When Jessica, when you had the Town Hall map up, I was thinking of the trestle, um, behind Farmers Exchange and just how, I mean, I didn't look at it that deeply, but I just, I think I saw that that whole area is considered floodplain. And I was like, man, that's still a lot of water to gotta get up. Like, I think it's like forty feet, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's crazy steep through there too. Yeah. So, um, but, yeah, I mean, just to educate yourselves, you know, it, it takes a few minutes to check things out, or I know it's really confusing and the website being down doesn't help anything for me to help you tonight. So, um, yeah, feel free to shoot us an email or give a call or stop on by, um, and we can at least help you look at your maps.
I know these meetings are highly watched, but, you know, given Carol's experience and the ninety-day appeal period, would a resident need to do what Carol did and get a topographical survey? Or is it early enough, they could say, look at this like thirty-foot embankment?
Yeah. I don't know. I'm not FEMA. Um, they, I mean, they, they said in the, in the note that they sent out, um, that if you're going to submit an appeal, yeah, it needs to, it needs to have some sort of technical, scientific backing to it. Um, but, I mean, it's, there's like, like Carol did, I mean, she, you know, in a sense, Carol appealed the map for her property in Westford. So these things do happen outside of these ninety-day appeal windows, um. But I, yeah, I think it's, it's a pain in the butt, no matter what way you look at it. But I mean, at the end of the day, it's a flood, like you don't want your house flooding.
Yeah, you're not trying to avoid where your house is, but you want it to be realistic. Especially if you're gonna get slapped with a two thousand dollar flooding insurance bill, which I'm sure that might be cheap today.
Yeah, because that was quite a few years ago. Yeah, ten, twelve thousand years ago. Yeah.
So anybody else have any comments, Tony? We've all said something here or something.
No, I'm following you and I'm looking at the elevation changes. I do know that area very well. So I understand there's quite an embankment there. And there sure is no Noah's Ark coming. So, you know, hopefully that we can.
Okay.
Those maps are there for a reason, but I look at them up frequently with my full permits, so.
Okay, um, next on our agenda, we had something about the Townsend Community Electricity. Answer some questions and focus our line. Yeah, we have senior folders in the folders. Yeah. Okay. Okay, um, I don't have any more business except our next meetings are scheduled for November thirteenth and November twenty-seventh. I will be here in person on the thirteenth and I will not be here in person on the twenty-seventh. But I should be able to, um, participate. Okay, this is what everybody knows. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven forty PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven forty PM.
Second in.
And second, I'll take a local law vote. Carol votes as yes.
Andrew Shepard, yes.
Tony Lopez, yes.
Shepard, yes. Thank you all for joining us this evening.
Yep. Happy evening.